Good evening, everyone. And may I first begin by wishing everyone a happy, happy New Year. It is so nice to see all of you back with us. We hope everyone had a safe and enjoyable holiday. But it's my pleasure to be back with you for 2021. And we know that we will be doing wonderful, great things in this next year, 2021. So this work session of the Board of Trustees of the Spring Independent School District is officially called to order on Thursday, January 7, 2021. The time is now 6:06 PM. Board Trustees present are Winford Adams Jr., Deborah Jensen, Justine Durant, Jenna Gonzalez, and myself, Rhonda Newhouse. I would like to ask everyone to turn off or silence their cell phones or electronic devices at this time, please. The first order of business is a review of the minutes from previous meetings. Does any trustee have any changes or corrections to the minutes of the December 3, 2020 Board Work Session, the December 7, 2020 meeting, or the special call session on December 8, 2020, a regular meeting? Okay. Hearing none. These items will be submitted as part of the consent agenda at the January 12, 2021 Board of Trustees Regular Meeting. We will now hear from our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Rodney Watson.
Thank you, President Newhouse and other trustees. First of all, I'd like to say a Happy New Year to you all as well. I'm glad to see that you all are here and doing well and safe. And one of these, before I start, just with a few announcements going over the agenda is several comments that we continuously hear as we've returned back is just, are we monitoring the numbers, the number of positive cases? As you know, we have a very transparent dashboard, and we continue to have conversations daily and monitor the number of positive cases that we have in our district zip codes where our facilities are, as well as the zip codes where employees live. It's something that we continue to take very seriously, as well as making sure that our staff have all the PPE that they need as well, that we shared with you all last month and the month before. And so should there be anything or any new recommendations that we would like to make regarding that, we will definitely get back with you all, maybe update you on Tuesday or the following month. But I do want to just make sure that you all, as well as anyone listening to the meeting tonight, understands that we are monitoring, we are continuing to make adjustments and looking at current guidelines to determine within the power that we have in the district or you all have as the board, that we're utilizing all of those necessary resources. Tonight, we have a very straightforward agenda. Dr. Cobb, our Assistant Superintendent, will be presenting to you all our taper. As you know, that we did not have the STAR test last year, so it will be in a bridge taper, but she will be presenting you the results of the data that we have tonight, and then we will follow the rest of the items accordingly. Thank you, Ms. Newhouse.
Check your mic.
Thank you. Our next item is Agenda Participation. This allows members of the public an opportunity to speak on agenda items before those items are considered by the Board. Mr. Brinkley, do we have anyone registered to speak under Agenda Participation?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Okay. Thank you. So we will continue with the agenda as printed. For our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Innovations and Communications, Tiffany Dunn O'Phill.
Good evening, President Newhouse, Dr. Watson, and members of the Board. I'm just going to pass this item on to Dr. Cobb to present.
Thank you, Tiffany. Okay, and I can tell that we're up. Good. President Newhouse, members of the Board, Cabinet members, I have the pleasure of presenting today the taper report, also known as the Texas Academic Performance Report, for the 1920 school year. So what is the taper report? It is the annual report produced by the Texas Education Agency that includes state, district, and school level data. The data is disaggregated by ethnicity, economically disadvantaged status, English learner status, and special education status. And why a public hearing? It's required by the Texas Education Code, Chapter 39, Section 39.056, that requires districts of Board of Trustees publish an annual report that includes the taper. A public hearing must be held within 90 days of the release. The release this year, or the school year, was November 20, 2020, and notification to the public must be sent. Before I get started, and Dr. Watson alluded to this, because there was no STAR or EOC last school year, we will not be reporting on that information because in the taper report for this year, it's just a repeat of the 1819 school year. But we will be reporting on other measures that the taper report has updated for this school year. So we're going to start with the enrollment. So this first slide that you see here is the district compared to the region and the state of, and the student enrollment. So what we have here is 2017, 18 to 1920, and you can see the breakdown by the major race and ethnicity subpopulations. And then on the far right, probably a little small to see, is the overall population. And as you can see, over the past three years, the population has decreased slightly. As far as the percentage of race and ethnicity breakdown compared to the region and the state, you can see that spring ISD is majority Hispanic population, and is comparable to the region and the state. Our district has a larger African-American population compared to the region and the state, and we have a smaller white population compared to the region and the state. This next slide allows us to compare the ethnic composition of our students compared to our teachers. For the first time in recent history, for African-Americans, we have more African-American teachers than we do students, but it's pretty comparable to each other, and it's just that they've crossed paths as far as the line graph. For Hispanic, we have an overrepresentation of Hispanic teachers compared to Hispanic students, and the opposite is true with the overrepresentation of white teachers compared to white students. And then on the right-hand side in the tables, you can see the smaller subpopulations that are reported, and for the most part, they're pretty comparable student to teachers. This next slide is our percentage of economically disadvantaged. This is a notable slide for you. You can see that in the dark blue, those are the bar graphs for the past three years for the district, and our percentage of economically disadvantaged has increased considerably. This can be attributed to required online registration for the, for parents, for their students, and it better and tighter systems and processes that are in place. It should be noted at this point in time that it appears that we're going to be around 87% economically disadvantaged for this school year, and that's just based on the preliminary PIMS snapshot. So what that essentially is doing is it's giving us a better indicator of our actual population. Our population hasn't necessarily become more economically disadvantaged. It's the systems, processes, and updating of records that we're finding. This is not comparable to the region and the state that have stayed pretty much the same over the past three years. And our next look is the district compared to the region and the state for advanced placement and IB results. At this point in time, we do not have IB testing in our school district where the region and the state does. As our students matriculate through and we have the IB program, they'll start being represented, but we aren't there yet. So as you can see, over the past four years, the district, being in dark blue in the top bar graphs, have steadily increased participation in AP testing. We also have the, on the right-hand side, the number count of participation. We did have a slight downturn in 2019, but we anticipate that will be, that will go back up again. As far as percentage of scores greater than the criterion, the criterion is three or better on an AP exam with five being the highest. You can see that positively and notably that our percentage of scores beating the criterion or higher has increased over the past four years. And if you look in the table to the right, you can see that it also accounts for more students meeting that criteria with 180. This next set of slides is showing the SAT/ACT participation for a class of 2017 to 2019. As you all, as you all know, we do provide SAT day for our juniors. This administration happens in March, and we are doing it again this year. And we anticipate that the participation may decline a little bit for this year due to COVID. However, we are making that available to all testers, whether they are in person or remote learners at this point in time. As you can see, compared to the state and the subpopulations, because of providing the SAT test to all students, we outpace the state in every subpopulation. Now we're going to look at the results. So you have here the district compared to the state, SAT results for ELA and Writing from class of 2018 through, compared to class of 2019. So you'll see this structure throughout the report in that we compare all students, and then we look at the race and ethnicity populations, and then when applicable, we also use, will compare to the subpopulations such as special ed and Ls. So you can see here, we are below the region and the state for SAT scores. I also should note, those of you who remember the blip that we had SAT scores that went to 2,400, we're back to the 1,600 mode that you probably were used to when you went to college, that the highest score that could be accomplished in ELA and Writing is 800, and the same for math. It should be noted that because we have all students participating, we have students who may be college-ready and college-going compared to other districts who are testing only their college-going and college-ready students. Okay, and this is the graph for math. It is similar to ELA and ELA Reading in that we are below the region and the state in scores.
So one of the things, this is a point of comment that we need to decide, we'll continue deciding as a district. So we do test all students, and not all the districts, most districts don't test all students. And so each year when we come through this, and I'm looking at the gap, if we only test the students that want to take it, then the scores are going to be higher. But from an equity standpoint, there are kids who can't pay for it, who don't know about it, and whose parents won't get them in. And so you have always said, let's keep testing all students. But as Dr. Cobb mentioned, I wanted to just make sure we note that, that, you know, we're going to continue testing all kids to make sure all kids have access. We pay for it for them and everything.
We might make note of that in this report, just as a footnote in this report. Like, I think that's an important distinction that we need to make, because I like the idea of testing all the kids every year, so.
It's a little strange not having a note taker here with me. Okay. So now we're going to take a look at advanced course and dual-credit course completion. Again, we're slightly below the region and the state. However, we are trending, when we're looking at all students, African-American, Hispanic, white, and Asian, we are trending in the same way that they are trending with an upwards And looking at the advanced course and dual-credit completion for our all-students special education economically disadvantaged in Ls, this is, this is not my first time to present this. We presented this cabinet into principles. This was the notable results that we really had some discussion about. Our special ed population actually exceeds the region and the state. However, if you're talking about all students, it's considerably behind. And so that's a conversation that we're having about how to improve those, the course completion for those students. And also, I'm sorry, my, I think my, oh, you don't see that. My box is covering it up. For English learners, you'll also see that there's been a nice uptick from 2016, 17 to 2018, 19, and just barely below the region. Again, however, compared to the all-students, it is at a lower performance. And looking at, this is the graduation by type for the class of 2019, and here you have the district, the region, and the state. So what you see here is that the old graduation plan, when it was the four-by-four, that's pretty much on its way out, so we'll probably just continue reporting that in the future years. For us, it was .2%. Hellsville Five Grad Plan is what the, the plan that the students are on now. And so there's a foundation plan, no endorsement, foundation plan endorsement, and foundation plan distinguished level of achievement, with distinguished level of achievement being the highest. As you probably can see, that we are behind the region and the state for the distinguished level of achievement. After some investigation of this, what we found is that a few years, a couple of years ago, the state made Algebra II not a requirement for graduation. However, it is a requirement in order to reach the distinguished level of achievement. So in talking to our counseling department and to our campuses and such, we're going to make sure that the students are aware that they really need to take Algebra II because it limits their college-going and college access, or they may not be necessarily thinking about that now. It closes the window, so we want to make sure that they take Algebra II so five years from now, three years from now, whenever they do want to go, decide maybe college is for me, that opportunity is open to them. And so we're having further conversations with our counselors and our campuses about this nuance.
I would go one step further and say that we should be pushing kids, especially our college track kids, for calculus. Taking calculus on a college campus is orders of magnitude more difficult than taking calculus in a high school classroom. And so, I mean, to meet that requirement in high school gives our kids a leg up in college.
As having a freshman in college who just took Cal One, I completely agree. We do have our Director of Guidance and Counseling, Dr. Collins, that you'll have an opportunity to meet a little bit later this year, but she, she's listening and will duly note that and make sure that's also part of the emphasis. So now we're going to take a look at the four-year longitudinal graduation rate. Again, kind of the same look that we've seen before. It's all students compared to African, African-American, Hispanic, white, and Asian. And as you can see, we're just below the state with a, with a slight decline in Hispanic that has garnered some of our attention. As you can see, when we get to the four-year longitudinal graduation rate for our subpopulations, this is also an area of note that we made. As you can see, in special education, we had a nice rise and then a decline again. In talking to experts in the special ed department, or formerly in the special ed department, some of this can be attributed to coding of special ed graduates that changed at the, between those two years. So that is one reason for that. But also have to consider how we code and take into account continuers in special ed. That's a nuanced piece to it that we'll have to discuss more to make sure that we're on track for those students. Also notably that we have had discussions with our L population, although kind of trending along with the region and state, although below, what we noted when we were looking at the enrollment size, it's not necessarily presented here, is that our L population has increased year over year. So in 2019, our L population, that's English language learners, was 25.4%, and then this for 2020, it was 28%. So, and we are seeing that number again this year rising. So that's a population that we're going to, that we've had our eyes on, that we have been providing resources to, but that we need to continue to bring to the forefront.
Can I ask you to back up to the previous slide and speak a little bit? Do we have any insight to the decline around the Hispanic graduation rate?
So it's, a lot of it can be attributed to being an L population, that those, those are not necessarily, they're not mutually exclusive populations. So as your L population is increasing, many of them tend to be Hispanic, especially in our, our L population here in this district are Hispanic origin also. So it kind of, it kind of coincides with each other. Looking at the four-year longitudinal dropout rate, again, the same, same kind of look, the desire obviously is to have as close to zero as possible. You don't want a high number for dropout. For the all-students, African-American, Hispanic, white, and Asian, we are somewhat comparable to the region and the state. However, again, similar to the conversation that we had just a minute ago about graduation rate, our special ed numbers are higher than the region and the state. And then our Ls, this is where, again, where we've paused and had some more conversations. Although it has decreased from last year, it's still at a higher rate than the region and the state. So along with the L conversation about graduation, when you're talking about graduation, a lower graduation rate, the drop, the higher dropout rate also is a corresponding conversation to see and to determine what we can do to better that.
It's still not clicking for me, but we'll talk about it more later.
Also, I know we're not like into what do we do about this phase of this conversation right now. But for me, this like reemphasizes that we should really remain focused on two-way dual-language instruction and extending that beyond what we're doing now with the elementary school kids into middle and high school. I think there's an opportunity there to impact these numbers if we can continue to grow that program and recruit teachers that can engage students in two-way dual-language, both native speakers and our kids here that we want to learn Spanish. So I anticipate, and like, I don't have any study to back this up, that as we grow that program, we'll start to see better outcomes here for our L students.
I agree. I agree. I will say that, you kind of alluded to the, what are we going to do about it? We do have, wait till the end of the presentation, please, but we do have the panelists from Multilingual, we have special ed on the line, we have our Director of College, our Career Counseling, I'm sorry, I botched that, Academic Counseling. So if you do have any point, more direct questions you want to ask, they are available.
One of the other things I would say, Mr. Rand, is that we want this dropout rate number to be a lot lower. As our graduation rates decline, our dropout rates come up, and that's the opposite of what we want to happen. And what Dr. Cobb was saying is some of that's attributed to, as we begin to get more students in that need more services, we've got to be able to address them, and that's what Mr. Anderson was talking about, ways that we can long-term work on it, but then also respond to the needs of the newer population of students that are moving to our district to meet their needs.
So the taper report then goes into how students do once they leave us and they have graduated. So this is a comparison of the district, the region, and the state in Texas Higher Education from 2015, 16 to 2017, 18. This data lags two years. So as you can see, our percent enrolled in Texas Higher Education has declined slightly, and it, you can see the decline also for the region and the state. And then percent completed one year of Texas Higher Education without remediation is below the state, but for us has remained relatively steady. I can tell you as overseeing college readiness, added efforts that we're doing, that we have been doing and what we'll be doing this year, is that we're continuing to increase the AP and dual-credit offerings for students so that they're more academically prepared. We're providing Texas Success Initiative Assessment tutoring, which is the exam that you have to take when you want to attend community college. So they're, they're having a test prep. Also, summer bridge activities for our rising seniors, and we're also looking to expand those summer bridge activities for our graduates as well. We're also working on, working with community-based organizations to have mentorships that will follow the students from high school graduation all the way to college graduation. So you'll be, you'll have an opportunity to hear more about that at a later time, but there are some exciting things that we're doing to help address this.
This appears to be better than what we've seen, I mean, even historically prior to 2015.
Yes, yeah.
Because the difference in how many are going and still there in a year, that's not good, but it's, it's a small percentage, I feel like, 10 and 12%.
So my doctoral work was actually in the retention of students when they go to college. And so that one reason that, and probably one reason why it's a slide here, is that that chart on the right is actually the best indicator that they will complete college, even though it's only about, only reporting on the one year. If you can make it through the first year, you probably know this anecdotally, you probably, you have a better, better likelihood of making it through your college graduation. So as, as much as we can bump that number up, the more likely the students are going to be successful to concede all the way through their bachelor's degree. Okay, we're now going to talk about staffing, and those of you who have seen this before, this hasn't changed much, especially as far as the definitions of who's an educational aid auxiliary staff teacher. But the first part tells you who falls under each one of those definitions. The district compared to the region and the state are very similar in educational aids, campus administration, and district administration. Where we differ is we have a higher percentage of auxiliary staff and professional staff, and then a lower percentage of teachers. And looking at the highest degree held by the, by teachers, this was a, I think we got a question the first time you all saw it, the no degree. Those tend to be people who have industry-based experience in CTE, and so their experience allows them to teach CTE courses, and they don't necessarily need a bachelor's degree. So if you look at the bachelor's degree, we are at a lower percentage than the region and the state. However, when you look at the masters and the doctorate, we are at a higher percentage than the, than the region and the state. Looking at years of experience, and this is often a common conversation that we've had, is that the beginning teachers for our district is higher than it is for the region and the state, and it did increase in 19 and 20. For 1 to 5, 6 to 10, and 11 to 20, we are comparable to the region and the state, and we are less than the region and the state for over 20 years' experience. This next slide, and I'm glad that Ann is sitting nearby me, is the average salaries by years of experience. And you can see, compared to the region and state for every category, we are higher. Much of that can be attributed to, one, that we are in region four, and it's a more competitive environment when you're comparing to the state. The other piece to this is that stipends are also rolled into this averaging, and that the way we do stipends makes the numbers look larger than you may anticipate. So that concludes the taper part of the report. We take this opportunity to do the other required reporting that you probably have seen year after year. So what will also be presented in today's here, well, this is not the public hearing, but today's presentation is the accreditation status, the report on violent or criminal incidences, PIMS Financial Standards Report, and then previously presented, you saw in October 2020, was a public hearing on the campus performance objectives. So our 2020 accountability rating, we were not rating, rated, declared a state of disaster due to COVID. 2020 Special Education Determination Status, need substantial intervention. 1920 Accreditation Status, we're accredited. 2021 Rating was Superior Achievement. This is showing the violent and criminal incidences that come from the PIMS 425 report, and I want to make sure that I flip over to that, that table. So you can see that this is two, two slides long. Our highest PIMS code incident for here was the possession, so, or selling or using an, under the or using, and under the influence of marijuana with 418 incidences. And then on the second slide, you'll see that really the bulk of the violent or criminal incidences is categorized under 41, which is fighting and mutual combat, and excludes all offenses under Penal Code 22.01 with 1324. This actually represents a decline. In the previous year, it was 2004. So our overall violent or criminal incidences for this year, this reporting year is 2013, as you see at the bottom. Last year, it was 2816. This decline can be attributed to better and tighter coding for violent and criminal incidences, as well as efforts to, to work on the decline or the services to make sure that students don't get to a level of being violent or criminal, but also can be attributed to that we were closed for three months due to COVID. And that concludes the presentation. What questions do you have?
The criminal incident, you said this could be attributed to coding changes. Did, for the 2018, 2019, were there different codes or did they change?
No, let me, let me clarify that a little bit more. No, it's not necessarily that the code, it's having training to make sure that there's a standardization in how people code. It's not necessarily that the codes themselves did not change. It's understanding what constitute which code.
It would be useful to have in this, in this graphic right alongside the 2019, 2020 data, the prior year's numbers.
We can have that, and it was, it's a lot kind of fast. I'd like an opportunity to review it and have another discussion on Tuesday if possible.
In the other, so what's the distinction for the Special Education Determination Status? What's the difference between need substantial intervention and needs intervention? What, I mean, what is it that we're not doing as well as we were doing for that to change? Or is that really a substantive change?
So we've, we've had that distinction for a couple of years, and that is, that is one that we do need to improve upon. I do have, we do have Peg on the panel. But I will, I will say that it's based on our RDA, our results-driven accountability, and how our students are doing academically. It also incorporates their discipline. And so it's multiple, it's multiple measures, and it's being below a certain threshold that the state has provided. And so I think if we want to go in more depth, what happy to do, we can call upon Peg, and she can talk about the, the work that they're doing to help improve that.
So for a period of time, we were getting really good comprehensive monthly reports from special ed. And a lot of that conversation, as my recollection, was around compliance and making sure that the, the kids folders were audited properly, and all the I's were crossed, the I's were dotted and T's were crossed. And so I felt like when I was listening to those reports, that we had a really good handle on special ed. So I was surprised when I looked at the taper for the previous year and saw that our rating was substantial intervention. And then after we did all that work, which I understand grew sort of our population of special needs students or need substantial intervention, which sounded to me like we had been doing worse. And so I'm wondering.
And I hear Peg on the line. Peg, do you want to share?
Yes, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to you. I think a great deal of the taper report looks at the academic achievement of our students. And our, we are working to close the achievement gap. But that is taking a lot more time than teaching people how to cross the Ts and dots, dot the I's. With special education, one can never totally separate compliance issues from instructional issues. If you ignore compliance, after a year or two, you won't have time for instruction because you'll dealing, be dealing with so many corrective action plans and apparent concerns about the compliance issue. So we're trying to keep a balance, if you will, between compliance and instructional issues. And a lot of the taper report looks at the lag or the gap between the achievement of students participating in special education services versus those who are participating in general ed.
Can you talk a little bit about the audit, we just got back to that, Scott, and we got back from TEA yesterday?
We did. We've had a corrective action plan about our completion of initial referral, reports on initial referrals in a timely fashion for several years now. And we were asked to submit 15 folders and documentation on 15 students, and all 15 came back 100% compliant, which is a wonderful thing. But please remember, TEA did not pick the 15, we did. So it's not like you're going to air your dirty laundry to TEA. You're going to be judicious when you select those folders. So it is a wonderful thing that we are, we are making progress. It's just as more students are found eligible for services, I think in the past five years, we've gone from 7.6%, and we're now at just about 10, 10.2 or 10.3%. The more students you have, the more compliance issues that you have to deal with. We've also switched from having our educational diagnosticians and art facilitators do the art paperwork to having our teachers do it. And that's been quite the learning curve for our teachers as well. So we are still trying to maintain a balance. We're excited about the progress we've made in, in terms of becoming increasingly diligent with our compliance issues. But we still have a long way to go with our instructional services.
I think that's the point Winford, and I know Ms. Hodges, you've made as well. It's an instruction issue. As our population continues to grow, and you can tell by the percentage of numbers that she says our special ed numbers are growing by leaps and bounds from 8 to 10%. When you look at the number of at-risk kids we have in the district, this one from 69% to this year, 87% economically disadvantaged, all of that continues to grow, and there's more students that are being classified as special ed. And so one of my concerns is when there's an instruction issue, sometimes the kid can present as special ed, but it's a lack of instruction that they receive. And so that's the area and the focus that we're really having to work on, is to really ensure that, that those students, accommodations and modifications are being taught at the level of their IEP, and ensuring that the kids are making that adequate yearly progress as they move through.
So I'm going to ask the Justine question, is there anything we can do to facilitate what you need, Rodney? I mean.
So that's a, that's a very interesting question. You know, there's, there's a lot of things that we have the opportunity to do that we don't need to ask for. So it's not necessarily a money thing, that you need to allocate more money for special ed or allocate more money for positions for special ed, because I, we have that authority within administration to be able to do that. I think one of the things that we'll continue to do as we get into our equity work, it really is, I've been saying it all week, Dr. Hina Host and I were having a conversation about a presenter. And so often we ask what kids are failing or what special ed kids are not passing. And the presenter changed that question to what kids are not being served. Kids don't serve themselves, adults serve them. And so before, I would always come to you all and say, hey, we need more money to do this. We've got to make sure that we are serving the kids appropriately, that we've identified those kids. And at one point in time, special ed was a monthly topic that you all wanted to bring up. We can add that to the list to continue looking at that. So there's that line of sight to that around certain areas. And I think that line of sight is going to bring up more questions and more equity conversations that's going to present the work or push the work. And then we can determine what else is needed to support the population as a, as a team versus me just saying this is what we want.
And not just from a financial fiduciary lens. I mean, from a policy perspective and process inspector, perspective, is there something, you know, that we can implement that would help as well? And I know we, we made some changes previously.
So I would say yes. I was in a conversation with Dr. Parasol about some micro-credentiaing we're going to be doing for teachers in terms of setting clearer standards and expectations and having them be able to earn those badges and things that support the work.
Is that micro-credentia?
Yes. A lot of corporate offices are doing that. This really puts the onus on the employee to take advantage of the support and training. I know the special ed department, for example, has been doing a lot of work around training of teachers. And there's been a lot of teachers that have been eager to participate. However, there's a lot of teachers that don't participate. And so this micro-credentiaing would give us a way to give a nudge and to help. And so there will be some policy decisions as it relates to employee increases and raises and things based upon the number of badges and things that people earn to help be more efficient and effective in their jobs that we may need some policy around. So as we develop that, I'll bring that back for your feedback. I didn't let Peg talk, because she probably asked for a bunch of stuff. But Peg, can you think of anything else?
The Instructional Continuity Plan really does have several opportunities for us to look at policy procedures. Unfortunately, the word practice is in there. Because your policy and procedure can be one thing, and your practice perhaps drifts a little bit away from it. So I really look forward to the challenges and opportunity presented in that Instructional Continuity Plan. I just, we have reorganized the Special Education Department to dedicate four people primarily to instruction. One of those four is focusing on behavior and the social-emotional learning of our students. So we have tried to shift some of our roles and responsibilities to respond to the needs that the district is seeing. It's just that we can never lose sight that we have to keep the compliance. We can't just use one pedal, we have to use both pedals to keep this ship moving in the right direction.
I would put Ann on the spot, just from a funding standpoint. As we look at the money that we have allocated for special ed, do you see any, can you explain a little bit how we do that, and if you see any need for anything else?
No, for the most part, with the departmental budget, we use the zero-based budgeting. So of course, that will be Ms. Sherwood and her team presenting the funds that are necessary. From a payroll standpoint, we follow the staffing guidelines that comes to the board. So one thing you did mention, the Instructional Continuity Plan, and we did discuss that there's a grant that's available to help with some of the, the needs that are listed in the Instructional Continuity Plan. But overall, I mean, we're following a formula. And if those formulas need to be tweaked based on our needs and the assessment of our needs at this point in time, then that's something we would certainly bring up as part of the budget process.
If there are other questions, I want to just take opportunity to thank Kendall MacCarly. She's on the panel as well. She does the PowerPoint presentations. But also, you probably have seen, she's also, does the COVID dashboard, the creation and the upkeep of that, as well as any surveys that you've been seeing coming from Qualtrics. That's some of her work. So she did some great work for us. And if she was in the audience, I would, I would give her a shout out. Kendall MacCarly, Kendall, if you can say something, maybe you'll come up on the screen for a second as I call her out.
No.
She probably, she may have thought we were done and.
Oh, sorry.
There you go.
Sorry. What? I missed something. My computer cut out.
Oh, Kendall, we were just thanking you, but everybody, they just wanted to see who you were visually.
Visually, sorry.
There you go. I will, I will say she has a five-year-old at home, so you know, give her some grace.
Hence the headphones.
Okay, thank you.
And again, thank you, Kendall, thank you, Peg, and thank you, Dr. Cobb, for this presentation. At this time, let me take a moment and say that I'd like to welcome us as, and trustee Don Davis, who is with us by Zoom tonight. Thank you for joining us. For our next item, I'd like to introduce our Chief of Human Resources and Human Capital Accountability, Julie Hill.
Good evening, Madam President, trustees, and all those who are gathered with us. We come tonight. Am I still here? Yes, okay, something happened with my computer just now. You have a green folder in front of you that has the item that I'm bringing forward tonight. And we're bringing forward a resolution regarding the extension of time for FF-CRA, the Family First Coronavirus Response Act. And as you recall, when FF-CRA was passed back in March, in part, it gave an opportunity for districts to give employees up to 80 hours of paid sick leave for reasons that were related to COVID-19, whether or not they were, they actually contracted COVID-19 or whether or not they had been exposed, and there was a need for them to be isolated from others. And so that was in effect from April 1 until December 31. And so we were hopeful, thoughtful, many districts, because this is a part of every district across the country, thought that maybe there would be an extension. Well, there wasn't an extension that was passed by our US Congress. However, you know that we are still, as everyone is aware, we're still in the middle of the pandemic. And so we still have employees who may, who are sick or may become sick between now and the end of the school year. And so basically, we're coming to you tonight to ask if, in fact, the board would give an extension and allow us for employees who have not yet used that 80 hours of leave time to be able to use it in the event that they become ill between now and the end of our school year. There's always a possibility that the US Congress might come forward and add something like that in. And of course, we'd also ask that the superintendent be authorized at that point that the federal law would kick in, that we would stop here in the district. But in that stopgap, because there has not been a continuation, we'd like to ask for employees to be able to take advantage if they have not yet had the opportunity to do so, to have that at their disposal in the event that they become ill or they are exposed to the virus. We're also asking, if possible, because things are continuing right now, that you could possibly pass this tonight. We could really use it and have it in place as we continue to go through this pandemic.
Is that first sentence correct in the second paragraph?
Family First Coronavirus Response Act?
Employees to up to 80 hours?
In part, part of it is up to, yes, 80 hours. That's the, that's the 10, 10 days. Are there any other questions?
Reed's funny.
Dr. Hill, I want to just be sure I understand this. The federal government has not extended this yet, but we are extending it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President, is it possible, could we have a vote on this tonight so that we can continue to cover the employees who are even at this time still falling ill or having to be isolated from others where they've been exposed?
Yes, hearing no other questions. I will now entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the resolution for the extension of time to use sick leave in accordance with the Families First Coronavirus Response Act.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the resolution for the extension of time to use sick leave, of time to use sick leave in accordance with the Families First Coronavirus Response Act.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
It's been moved by Winford Adams, seconded by Deborah Jensen, that the Board of Trustees approve the resolution for the extension of time to use sick leave in accordance with the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Hill. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Chief Miranda is not with us tonight, so at this time, I'd like to ask our General Counsel, Jeremy Brinkley, to present the next item.
Good evening. If you'll, uh, turn to page twenty-one in your packet with me, uh, we have an item tonight to discuss the waiver to utilize additional, uh, asynchronous instruction days. And what this is, is recently, TEA came out with guidance allowing districts to utilize up to twenty-one hundred minutes of, uh, additional asynchronous instruction, essentially to have remote learning days, uh, so that districts could allow teachers the opportunity to have planning and preparation time. The example TEA used was one day per month to be able to collaborate, to plan, to prepare, and to make sure that, that they're able to continue providing that high-quality instruction to students, both in-person and online. Um, and so what we're asking you tonight is to consider allowing us, uh, to seek this waiver. Um, we do have a plan to have four remote days so that teachers can utilize that time. Um, and in your yellow folder, there is a short resolution that if the board passes on Tuesday as part of the consent agenda, we would use to provide to TEA to prove that the board has approved us to seek this waiver.
Uh, did we sign a similar waiver like a few, a couple of months ago? What was that one in reference to? Thought we signed something before or approved something before?
So I do know, Ann.
I was just thinking, you may be referring to the asynchronous plan, the instruction plan that we submitted to TEA.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And that just gave us the ability to receive funding for asynchronous instruction.
All right, thank you.
You also remember this because we brought this up in a previous meeting. Uh, we brought this up in a previous meeting that districts around us are giving the teachers that day. Um, since then, the state has come out with a, a plan and a waiver for us to do it. Uh, they were just doing it. Now we get to do it legally.
Well, as for me, I always favor giving teachers more planning time together, uh, especially since they are in the brave new world here of, uh, virtual learning, asynchronous learning.
Excellent. And I would just ask if that can be added to the consent agenda for Tuesday night?
Yes, we will be able to place it on the consent agenda.
Excellent. And may I go to the?
Just looks at how things, I'm looking at how things have changed. We are now maximum of counting in minutes and not in days, where in previous years we would have said, uh, days. And now we're counting our time in minutes as a requirement by the state.
Yes, we are.
Thank you. Please continue, Mr. Brinkley.
Thank you. Then, uh, if you look at page twenty-two, it's our second reading of Board Policy BDB Local. And as you'll remember, this is the, uh, policy that came through the Governance Committee, um, aligning the identified, um, committees with the board practice. And so, uh, I won't get into too many details because you heard it all last month, but if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And if there are no questions, then I would just ask that we, uh, place this on the consent agenda for Tuesday so that we can pass it and add it to our board policy.
I, I just want to comment that I think the governance has improved every year I've been on the board and we have, uh, Justine to thank for a lot of this. So thank you, Justine.
Thank you, and I'm always happy to serve.
Thank you. For our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief Financial Officer, Ann Westbrook's.
Thank you, President Newhouse, Dr. Watson, and members of the board. If you'll turn with me to page twenty-four, we have three items this evening. And the first one is on page twenty-four, which is a request for proposal for internet access. And we did a request for proposal and had several responders. And we are recommending to the board that we remain with the incumbent vendor to provide internet services. And we would utilize the E-Rate program to receive up to a ninety percent reimbursement for the cost of that internet service for the district, as we've done in previous years.
Ann, as long as we're bringing up the internet here, uh, we don't have any solar wind software on our.
We do not, but we receive the offer on a quite regular basis and we've, we've talked it through and entertained it a couple of times, but we've never seen the benefit in moving forward with that. But it does come up ever so often as an opportunity.
It's, uh, if you have any updates on, um, malicious incursions into our, uh, internet, I'm always interested in that. I know, uh, wasn't it a few months back that we had an attempt at, uh, taking over our system and ransomware? And we have wonderful backups and so on. I just so much appreciate the, uh, technical know-how we have to prevent that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. There are no additional questions on that item. Our next item begins on page twenty-seven, and it's our monthly report of taxpayer refunds. And so as you know, we are in the busiest portion of tax collecting season right now, beginning in January with our current going delinquent on February first. So everyone is hastily making payments right now. So it's really busy over at Lock Haven. But, so we'll see this list, I'm sure, get longer and longer over the next couple of months. And if there are no questions on that, then our last item is on page thirty, and it is a list of the monthly cooperative purchases that are over fifty thousand dollars. And we have two items on that list. And so of course, of the three items, the last two are information, or excuse me, the last one is information on the first two we would have on the consent agenda on Tuesday evening. And if there are no additional questions, Madam President, that is my last item.
Do we have any questions? Thank you, Ms. Westbrook's. That being the last item on our agenda, the Board of Trustees will now recess this open session and convene in a closed meeting in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act, section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-one, five-five-one-point-oh-seven-two, five-five-one-point-oh-seven-four, and five-five-one-point-oh-seven-six. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in the closed meeting will take place after the board reconvenes an open session. The time is now seven oh four PM. We will now reconvene and resume the work session of the Board of Trustees. The time is now seven thirty-nine PM. There are no other items on tonight's agenda, so I will now entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Madam President, I move that we adjourn?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Justine Durant, seconded by Janet Gonzalez, to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. There's no further business. This meeting is officially adjourned at seven forty PM.